I just didn't. It's. Make sure, watch if I do that. But, but if I think in here, because I did hit records the clock. Okay, I'm going screen is just. I. 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 I'll be back. I'm lost. I'm. I. Well, other people. I mean. Because we want to. I wonder that. Yeah. Let's get. But. The. We. In. It's almost. Yes. Actually, we need something for the. It's the same. In the next one, I read. I think there's. It. See. Because it's not. Best thing into. That's. The. I never. Except this is my. Don't. We have. Something about. That's. This is. Such as though. That's all I think. Down as you can. But I don't. Last. Okay. Which they. Also. A lot of. Um. They. They. Absolutely. Hopefully. Probably. It actually. You. Say. You. You. I mean, he wasn't. He was. He. Good. But. He. He. I find it hard for students to answer the question maybe. I felt that would help us. To. I think. It's based on. On. Which is. Oh. Welcome to our meeting today. Yes. And. That very. This is. And. Um.
But. If not me. There was that. Back. Then we're going to do this two weeks ago, we were in our class. About national publication. San Antonio. They have some jumping skills in the city. And then that is quite a skill. All part in part. And it's. So. The. That's in fifteen. So. Think of still. And during an enrollment to a sticky carpet in a smaller research place, that's not the new. It's. In the national article, they go talk about the construction from their region inviting. Breakfast. We talked about. Fifty-four. It's um. It's popular. You have to suck your. Big. That. For all the gathering, you can do it. People. I was told. It is. You can use. In motion. Uh. Sorry, John. Yeah. For. I think. It's certainly. Very good. That. The. Drop. It's. It's clear. This part. I mean, tiny shots. We might be able to. It's uh. But. We. The journey is not just about. I get. And. But. Kind of. Or. What is. So. The last few years. Goes about five schools. So. We. On. Anything. They. I've been having this conversation that really began. More than a year. So it's after. The. The. Raptor. For. The. Right into the building, it was like second and third year of community too. And. We have a conversation for my heartstrings. And certainly. In past part students, you know, ladies, our staff. It was also. Really, the community can have these moments, they think because we are very, very. Do not produce. We recognize that installing programs does. The opportunity for programs maybe completes out. And that. And that conversation so far. And also is. To do this. With. Um. We. We do have one of these. And my brothers, national plans, we talked about, including. If this is. We uh. It's not in your person. Remember, actually, because of school, you know, recently been here, I would make it. Three, five schools. Here. So it was. It was all right. You. You. The. And so. Well. Nobody must have had this. Probably be afraid we find out the. Twenty-five. There is. It's difficult to. Getting. It was only standing on the right. It doesn't really highlight us. And then. Use. And that's what we. And so the other thing that. Conversation hasn't been. Uh. That the charity of the nation. It's been divided. It would be. You know. And then to. To discuss. And providing the questions, comments and stuff. Suggest that the conversation continues. Then we do our. And take that next up. Needs. Literacy. Need. Then. We are. Totally. It is. Going. So the focus of places are going down. But. By now, I will share. And. Inside the. Nations will probably. Then. The presentation materials can be up on the screen. Build. I also. Will. That they're showing. Just. Have a search. That. This presentation will be forwarded and published to the paper website. Uh. By. Tomorrow afternoon. So people can see. So. Um. But as I started, we start from. It's. It's not immediate. It's. And in terms of what we believe we do for the district, we are researching. Maximizing the head focusing on student. We have had this conversation before. And we reverse those difficult problems with the students and students. The. And then we. And with our staff as well. Uh. We embrace those as best we can. And. With those. And the. For the. Part. So. I'd like to. Have a dive. The. Yes. Same. This. I like to share this. You know, the fall that. That we started with a whole study center. You know. Obviously. And the. The direction. My goal is to build a family. In a. President. Beginning. Very sexy. Sensation. You know, we get some of the representatives of the state. Because. We're. Many. So. We. Look. Back. In. A lot of it. It's. And when you see. The. Fulmination of the. Today. Um. Yeah. We. We feel like this is going to. Everything. Lots of considerations. But. You know, coming outside, most people do this. And. That lesson. In terms of. What. Whether it's. Or. The. Considered. Beginning. Now. Where the sources. Patient. Start like. Eighteen. eighty-one. Patient. Because they're. On. Domino. All of it. That was. So this. Is. Exactly. Thank you. Back. For. Of the. States. Board members. Um. This is our agenda. From. The day. We will. Have. The. First. We. Off. Instead. Maybe. Turn a little bit. With the. Meeting. Numbers. And who. That. Is. Who. I. I. So far. And. Possible. That we. If. We. That we. Want. To. Talk. About. The. Fourth. So. This is what the many years. Conference. In. Past. This. That is. You are. I'm. Probably a lot of the data. But. About. The. Populace. And. They're. And we. Going out. And. And we have seven meetings, holiday meetings, which allow. One. Fascinated costs saving for work. Now that. You know, the country. The moment that those people look like each year and what consolidation of the staff might be. And look for. Then we can get one specific number that are moving forward. But. With expenditures, just what we've seen with our district in the past and other school districts that have closed. For recently. Put together these numbers. And that's. Um. Savings are usually around fourteen percent on staffing and that includes function one thousand. Which is the instructional. Uh. Instructional function that their teachers and our fair professionals. Uh. Twenty-one hundred is for student support. So those include things like attendance, clerks and social workers, nurses, psychologists. Each. O C C two. That's the twenty-one hundred fifty-four. And the twenty-two hundred is the instructional support function that includes library. Um. Any curriculum specialist or a reading specialist that may be at a school site. That. Uh. One of the larger savings that we've from the staffing side of things is with the school administration. Generally, you save about ninety-five percent of that. Sometimes there are other. Uh. Small expenditures. Uh. For. Administration. But. That's the twenty-four hundred function for school administration. If you don't have a school open, you don't need a principal. And schools not. Being transferred over to another school site to have treatment. Uh. The next savings is deeply. How do you prevent in the maintenance of plant or the operation of a, of a school building? Uh. Primarily that's utilities. So we still have to keep utilities on when a building is vacant. We usually keep it around eighty-five, eighty-six degrees. Uh. Which. For Arizona, so requires air conditioning. I don't know. Um. But there are some staffing savings. We um. Wouldn't necessarily need to have a day with the sodium at a school site. Um. But you still have to maintain the average facility and ensure that it's not getting any oxidative disrepair. So we still could have some maintenance. At. Even. I mean, there is always a protected loss of students. There may be some families who make different choices and uh. Either may go to another school within our district or may go to a school outside of our district. And so I have a fairly China number in here or what I would say a conservative number for eighty and lots of twelve and a half. All. Of these numbers are fairly conservative. I don't want to over promise what our savings are going to be on a school closure. Uh. But with these things, I think the consideration and very conservative numbers, approximately six hundred thousand dollars savings on each school. Well. It's very good to reiterate that. The. Proximate net savings of six hundred is assuming that the. Assuming that over the weekend and we don't find another. Could be offset. It's.
I'll add to that in addition to the financial savings, there's some opportunity. Um. I would say there's some opportunities that are missing in our smaller schools. It's very nice to uh. And comfortable being in a school for the enrollment information. But there's some opportunities missing for students and our staff. Our special areas, our electives, even our before actual programming often depend on participation. And lower your enrollment is typically the fewer students that are participating. So we don't have the same opportunities that we do at other schools. Um. We also don't have the same opportunity to split students out from grade level to grade level to match them up with the right teacher. And from an employee standpoint, uh. When you've only one or two teachers per grade level, there's not a lot of collaboration that happens and sharing the workload. So from an employee standpoint, uh. It's also a little bit of a, of a stretch for them to continue to operate in a small setting. So there's some opportunities uh. To um. Improve those opportunities by putting uh. By closing. There's a brief history that Dr. Bell mentioned earlier in two thousand and four. We closed our first. Just a brief history is that Dr. Bell mentioned earlier in two thousand and four, we closed our first school, Goldust Elementary School. Uh, that was being utilized as our early childhood learning center in two thousand and twenty one when it was raised and rebuilt as the current Roadrunner campus. In two thousand and fourteen, um, the record was a process again to build Vista and Flithill. Uh, Flithill currently being utilized by our community education, uh, program to, uh, rent out and also use to help some of our district programming, uh, people. And then Bill Vista was closed and now acting as a state water community school was all twenty to second. Thousand nineteen, we closed, uh, Airy Brain and Arrowhead, Airy Brain is currently being utilized by P D A line and community education. And Arrowhead became James T. Reed, uh, Early Childhood Center, the program that was held to have the old Goldust campus before grade, because we looked there to, uh, rent that.
And that, there's the previous Camps that we have closed. Eighty seven.
Correct, so. So it was, well, Goldust was closed. Roadrunner moved across the street to the new campus. The old Roadrunner is being rented out by, uh, decent, uh, by, uh, special education, uh.
Welcome back. I have been District obviously long enough to see all of these closures happen, one as a principal colleague. Two as a assistant superintendent and an assistant superintendent.
Um, I'm a little bit of background in terms of, uh, of the processing data. We presented a, uh, demographic report and a discussion at the October twentieth, two thousand twenty two board study session. Uh, we shared, uh, some time related to our enrollment. Uh, we then brought back to the mark second, two thousand twenty three study session of demographics and all of the projections and totally used. Uh, where we were able to identify that seven elementary schools were under four hundred students at the time, two middle, four hundred, five hundred students. Current data, those numbers have changed by the year. Now it's thirty nine elementary schools and four middle schools throughout the company. And, uh, at that time, there was an express management board meeting board with a school closure committee. Our committee process was due, uh, with, with all the members to review current enrollment and finger projections. We brought in, uh, our department and share with, uh, uh, page two, thing of history and projection, uh, moving forward for next ten years. Uh, as well as some additional, uh, data for the forward schools and what programs are existing in this campus. Uh, the building capacity, uh, of that campus in itself contained in enrollment, self-contained special education or get in a moment. Special education classroom, bringing these ones coming in. Letter grades, uh, whether or not the school is an outer boundary location, meaning a border is a middle district where we might attract some students from, uh, across the border. Uh, the number of transportation routes that are, uh, within that, and, uh, condition of the building. I will point out that with a couple of things that One with various self-contained special education programming, that was a big part of our conversation. I will say the committee did not decide whether or not programs shouldn't or they would do it. Um, we just gave that a very important part of the conversation of recognizing that schools have a program. And then behind the scenes, working with special education department, we had to determine if the added location would put them, that would impact the decision, uh, that would be maybe a Uh, and then regarding building capacity, we also took that into consideration because A typical classroom for these staff that twenty eight students or thirty students, I mean, it's a self-contained classroom, they're half to twelve. And so looking at just pure classroom members, uh, might give us a misread on how many students could actually be in that, in that program, in that school. So relatively deep look at asking how that classroom would be and how many could be for a full size block.
Yeah, I think it's important to reiterate that, I mean, we don't classrooms of basically thirty by thirty nine hundred square feet. School's facility board going to use one number determining capacity because they But programming has such a huge Uh, as well as size of the student, right? It's, uh, bigger classrooms, bigger bodies, sometimes Uh, the type of furniture that you put in there, you know, in kindergarten classroom, there's, there's sand and, and, uh, Sweat tables and there's all kinds of things that, that take up space. It's no different with special education program as well. Yeah. The programs that are offered in the district set Start a private school setting where you have anywhere from, we have some classrooms that are limited to eight kids, like that. So the eight numbers that are up just over fifteen. So, uh, many times in some of our new, we've tried to build some smaller classrooms for those types of populations, but in many of our older buildings, they, they were not built out of regular classrooms. Sometimes we put a wall. That has an impact on the H B A C violation, so you know, you kind of duct tape and bailing wire when we can, but it has an impact. Programming has a direct impact on the program capacity.
But the committee looked at the district as a whole. What we asked them to do is rather than just looking at the, the four or five lowest school, we asked them to look across the, the, the whole and try to picture and identify Regions or areas where there's some trends or lower moments and, uh, and room for some consolidation or redondering and, and having these conversations. Uh, committee identified five different regions, four of them were elementary school regions, one with a middle school region. Uh, and then they can, uh, evaluated within those regions, multiple options. They looked at every school that was in there and took, and whatever it looked like and transposed that school. Uh, then also how we divided those boundaries. Uh, while we are bringing forward, uh, recommendation to close four schools. Uh, you say that's about fifteen different schools for at one point or other named and discussed in this process. And within those options, twenty nine different options we detailed were discussed and at that great length and decide, uh, what would be the, the best option. And other considerations that we took in, uh, as a part of these conversations, uh, or in this list here, looking at trying to honor and recognize keeping the neighborhood together, looking at the advantage. Uh, looking at the transportation, open enrollment issues that might develop, again, special education program. Uh, limiting, limiting on the number of resources that such as buses and, and bribery that we have and, and the impact that, that change might have on, on that system. Uh, the distance that we're going to have, uh, people within the boundaries traveling to school. Crossing major intersections, uh, length of time if they might be on a bus, uh, safe runs to school, uh, trying to be forward thinking, allowing for certain future growth opportunities and minimizing changes that, and Uh, and then also balance this for a moment and, and open moment trend. There's no solution that meets all of these criteria. Um, if, if, if we're looking to meet all of these criteria, we're going to look at what our options are. These were all very important conversational points that And that helped flavor opinions, uh, but we recognize that, uh, some of the solutions, uh, didn't necessarily satisfy each of these requirements. But I can say that they were all part of the conversation and the committee worked on each of these For options.
And, and just a little commentary, you look at some of these transportation, you know, we transport about eight thousand students a day. Third district. Uh, I started the district that qualifies for bringing these lunch, so Service programs for partners making sure that we still provide that, I mean, sometimes it's Kids did. And then, you know, when you look at the opening All of our schools. Our average is about fifty percent opening point. And so people are transporting and choosing. So when you look at that as an average. Just, you know, we're doing our best guess, uh, with the demographer and the scenarios and the numbers that we can, um, but there will still be that factor of choice that we can't always bring.
Uh, sheet we have here is our current, uh, demographic report with our enrollment for the past five years. We didn't include this year, that's this year's enrollment in that highlighted box there, that outline box, uh, the two columns, uh, from the And then projections for the next five years. And again, if you take a look at this and see that, uh, we have nine elementary schools. This is our K six, we have nine elementary schools that are below four hundred. Uh, and you can see the trend over the last five years has been downward as well. And these, if I tell my math properly, this over Down the students, uh, we talked to three hundred students over the last five years. In case it. So share the middle school. So with that data, the committee again was asked to kind of look at the big picture and identify different areas around the district. We called them these then where there was some options for some, some, uh, redondering or, or, or progress. And the first region we're going to talk about is the southwest region, uh, since three schools down here on the bottom, on top of Harvard, over, uh, this way, Hidden Hill Elementary School, Mark's Elementary School and, uh, the And all have, uh, low enrollment. Uh, after looking at all of those options and exploring all the different ways you can break it up. Ultimately, the committee decided to settle on both Hidden Hill Elementary School. Uh, in this case, the general education team includes foot and from the Marchford and Desert Road, which I'll share on, on your following slide on the map. Um, the Hidden Hill self-contained, uh, program connection for multiple, the emotional disability would be moved as part of the district by consolidation. Uh, these students are referred through, uh, the I D P and, and evaluation process. And we've been seeing actually decline in, uh, referrals in that rate. And so, uh, with the support of our special education department, uh, we see An opportunity to actually consolidate and reduce that from three campuses to two campuses. So as part of this move, that program would not go with, uh, the Hidden Hills community. It would be, uh, relocated to another campus. Uh, and then Marshford, which currently has two self-contained programs, uh, one of them being there are students with specific learning disabilities, those who can recommend a success, uh, program Uh, would also be moved, uh, to make room for this merger between the two schools. So again, the map here, the upper left-hand corner of the green, that is the current boundary for Hidden Hills. And you can see that, uh, under this recommendation, all of the student students would be moved over to, uh, Markford. The bottom left-hand corner is the purple that is currently part of Marshford Avenue. Uh, they would be moved over to the Desert Road campus. Uh, and what that would allow us to do is have two relatively balanced, uh, schools, one larger and one remaining smaller. So that's all, all students that are currently there today, which have moved as part of this, uh, part of this plan. Uh, all of them would have moved, that's all would go from three hundred eighty three students to Five hundred forty, so, uh, some of the talking points of this plan is that the, uh, increase in enrollment that It allows us to maintain the use of some of our newer buildings, Marshford was built in two thousand and twelve and then the road was built in two thousand and seven. Not currently adding transportation routes. Uh, again, some of that will settle with the dust, you know, depending on how many students actually make the movement change. But, uh, our, uh, transportation department currently does not see as being a challenge to add any newer routes. Uh, allows us to maintain our early childhood academy at Markford, um, which is a preschool program that we provide to the community that would continue to support, uh, those students. And again, it aligns on the consolidation of special education programs and, and other schools. The second region is the west central region and that's the Eagle Ridge Sunset Canyon, uh, Trail Run, uh, community or three schools up there. And again, they, I mean, spent time looking at, uh, often with each of these buildings, their one would look like. And the, uh, recommendation was to close Sunset Elementary School. You can say all of the general patients would be moved to Eagle Ridge, uh, school. And Sunset Canyon self-contained program, structure one and structure two, I do the program would also move along with general students. That would mean is that the Eagle Ridge, uh, connections program would be relocated to another school like part of the consolidation and talked about in the previous, uh, in the previous recommendation. Why I got a map is again, it's a little bit more simple. Uh, the red, the yellow right there is currently Sunset Canyon, September batteries and all of them. Building, uh, enrollment here would be, uh, taking the origin three hundred sixty six students to six hundred and seventy two students. Uh, Eagle Ridge is one of our larger campuses that has a high capacity. So this opportunity, uh, will allow us to take advantage of that and, and better utilize the space at Eagle Ridge. Uh, it would not split the Sunset Canyon community into two neighborhoods and just sending off a new two to the school. Uh, Eagle Ridge does for another district and, and we get some open enrollment from another Also again, not adding transportation route, uh, and again, it aligns on the consolidation of our self-education special education program to do the connections program that allows us to, to make that work.
Um, I would just maybe add, uh, quickly on this one, we realize when we, uh, make the recommendations for the boundary changes and I think the more understanding this too. We still have a student that's in this district and so there is something that's more conducive for our family. For example, in this one, perhaps somebody on the eastern side of that, that current Sunset Canyon boundaries, it may be more convenient for them to go to Trail Run. We have our opening points. Moving on to the northeast region, this includes Desert Trails, Pinnacle Peak and Greyhawk. And you're not recommending from the committee any closures for this area because this is where We expect the future growth of the district to be, um, in, in this area and even for the west, um, most for north of the one oh one. And so the rec- recommendation from the committee though is to rebound the desert trails has, uh, larger numbers right now than Pinnacle Peak and Greyhawk. And so it's the rebounding east of fifty sixth street to go to Greyhawk and Pinnacle Peak. Um, this is what it would look like right now. There is one community, um, in that area, uh, called Talon. And the boundary would be to have all of that neighborhood go up to Pinnacle Peak. Right now, that dotted line shows the potential alignment of Deer Valley. It will not actually align from Deer Valley to Deer Valley. It'll probably align through Deer Valley on that western side over to Thompson Street. A little bit above that red, a little over there. Um, but the boundary that we have proposed as the recommendation Is for that talent community to stay together and move to Pinnacle Peak. And so that would be the only change right now. Uh, so with that, desert trails would, uh, go down a little bit to help us balance out that northeastern portion of the district. It moves to six hundred and fifty one currently to approximately five hundred and ninety one. Uh, Greyhawk would move to three eighty and stay at three eighty because there aren't any, uh, homes Right, right now that were the effective change for Greyhawk. And then because of that talent community, Pinnacle They keep would go from four fifty three to four thirty nine. The projected enrollment, I think those numbers are backwards, that's what, yes, yes, those numbers are backwards. Uh, and then the projected enrollment moving forward, uh, also helps to balance those, the schools out in the future as well. Tell us the second point, what we need to change in those. Uh, the, uh, we verified, okay, twenty three, twenty four, forty day, I believe, is the four thirty nine member and the decade and all of these support, like you remember, Dr. Jarish will verify that. So the benefit to that one is that it maintains the opportunity to grow in those areas without closing schools. That's why there's not a real issue for school program. Next region, the east region, which includes North Branch and Desert Springs and Liberty. And the recommendation for this region is to close Desert Springs prefatory. The boundaries would split between North Branch and Liberty, so relatively to the evening schools. And that would be split, split along Greenway, Greenway, relative to fifty six, St. Scott's Ale. Um, additionally, the desert springs, structured one and structured two programs will be moved to another school. So this one, it gets a little bit more complicated on this map and part of that is we have desert springs is pulled up a little weird already. So we're trying to, when we did all of these closures and boundary changes. Make some changes that would be, um, sustainable moving forward into the future in both sense for us when we're looking at this five years from now. So you can see that there's a portion of desert springs in green, north of the, uh, canal. And to the east of fifty sixth street, south of the one oh one and west of Scottsdale, that little portion there. That portion would come down to the North Branch. You can do that in the, uh, red arrow pointing down to that intersection with North Branch, south of Bell Road. We also have a strange little triangle that's in yellow there from Sonoran Sky. There is an apartment complex there with about forty students, um, forty cage ball students, but not all good. Forty in that triangle.
In that triangle?
Yes. I have my note here.
Okay.
Yes. Uh, because that is K twelve students.
Oh, gosh.
Changes, yes. Um, there's an apartment complex there and it was convenient at the time, the apartment complex was built for them to go to Sonoran Sky. But now it does some kind of weird things for our transportation boundaries in particular. Um, so we would move that triangle of Sonoran Sky over to North Ranch. And as well, that, uh, bottom portion that's currently desert springs. But the part that's north of Greenway, the dotted line there would also go to North Ranch. Then the bottom portion of That desert springs area, south of Greenway would be rebounded to Liberty. So with that, the North Ranch number would go from four seventy nine to five ninety four. And then Liberty would go from three forty four to five sixty five. Um, and then as well in the future with the five-year projection, be very balanced up between those two. This minimizes the disruption to desert springs, um, in some of the initial scenarios we were looking at, where we're looking at Uh, splitting their boundaries up into four different schools that we're trying to do our best to not split up too much. Um, so the committee kind of went back to the drawing board on this one. Um, so the committee kind of went back to the drawing board on this one and came up with this. Uh, takes into consideration the needs addition of the desert spring building. It's uh not our best-conditioned building for an elementary school. Um, and then would help us to increase our North Branch and our Liberty as well. So those are the benefits of this.
And uh the Pinnacle Peak uh number, oh, it's not like, uh, that door thirty-nine would actually be five thirty-six.
One fifty-three is correct. Now the second number is five, five.
Alright, so the uh middle school uh projections there you can see are are two thousand and forty-seven four enrollment numbers are in that. Uh, so in this conversation, uh, it centered around this. Often and evaluating uh probably on the of each event and getting some support. The very middle school, uh, and the living boundaries are split. Generally, no school boundaries would be drawn as well. Of course, there are. Uh, and then also Indian Bend uh boundaries, they currently are split between three schools. There's six graders block middle schools. Either at Shea, Greenway, or Sunrise. Uh, and that would be changed. Uh, the ones that are going from Greenway would now be going to Shea as well. Which will make uh Indian Bend uh splitting between two divisions. So by closing uh this authority, you can see the the blue kind of dog shape, I guess. Creative vision. So the uh, that, that's the this authority, the tennis boundaries, the uh, the west half of it. Uh, west of thirty-second street would uh shift down to uh Greenway for. Worth of Bell, east of thirty-second street, which is primarily the uh. Uh, that would shift over to Sunrise. And then the big Bell and Greenway, current Greenway boundaries. Uh, would be shifting over to Sunrise as well. And the bottom left-hand corner between Greenway and Sweetwater in the yellow there. Uh, that is currently uh part of Greenway's boundaries. That's the Indian Bend community, uh and they will be now shifting over to Shea. Uh, we don't think uh enrollment here would have Greenway going to fourteen, four fourteen, six. Five oh two. Uh, this plan would increase enrollment at three different schools. Uh, we create kind of more centralized battery for Greenway and Sunrise. So we look at the, this battery for Sunrise. It's a little bit more of an oval square with the school in the middle, uh and Greenway and this authority's bound combined. Uh, so that somewhere down the road, if we're having conversations again, we're, we're doing a little bit more of an eccentric. Pro- prostitution. Uh, there's no impact on special programs uh between the schools because. Uh, we don't have any self-contained programs at the school, uh and also we're not, uh, at this time, resulting in additional route transportation. So in the summary of our close school closures, uh the recommendations of the community were both Hidden Hills Elementary School, Sunset. And Elementary School, uh Desert Springs Prepory, and then this authority middle school. Uh, there's some rebounding that's part of this recommendation, rebounding that section of desert trail that is east of fifty-sixth street. You'd send students to Pinnacle Peak and Greyhawk Elementary. And then also the double triangle of Sonoran Sky. Uh, that will be boundary over to North Branch Elementary. And then there's a lot of receiving schools here that are impacted by this. Larchburg, Desert Cove, Eagle Ridge, Pinnacle Peak, Greyhawk, Liberty, and North Branch. All do receiving additional students uh under these recommendations. And middle schools, uh Greenway, Sunrise, and Shea would also be receiving additional. Uh, again, the, the timeline here, as uh Bill mentioned, is we have had uh many meetings over the last six months. Doing stuff, please, we're here to have the presentation. You can hear your commentary and acting as. Uh, if at the, if we bring us to the uh Thursday meeting, the summer seventh meeting. And uh you improve moving forward community forums, we have community forum meetings scheduled for January ninth and sixteenth, seventeenth, and eighteenth at each of the schools. Uh, that are being recommended for closing, and they will be regional meetings. So uh Hidden Hills is hosting the regional meeting. Uh, other schools that are impacted, uh Larchburg and Desert Cove are receiving school for the invite into the ten at me as well. To hear more details about the plan and to ask any questions that they have. Uh, and then it was a January twenty-third uh meeting that is a district-wide meeting to address all of these uh recommendations. Uh, and to allow the community to attend uh for, from board of all. For meaning is. Able to bring us to a discussion and a potential vote, following through the recommendations. Uh, and then began the process of parent orientation and and following through with our next step. Um, we will need to continue to review the impact of these now on our emphasis and uh. Uh, we'll continue to take a look at our special education program because that is always changing and plus the new students. And making sure that we are, we are moving people with proper supports and um um resources that they need. Uh, also needing to evaluate our transportation routes and our repurposing options that will depend obviously on which campuses uh we are being opposing, if any. Um, and then community notices about the public forum, believing will be going out. Uh, principals are prepared to send communications out tomorrow regarding recommendations uh and and where we are with the process. Uh, and then uh for cordial, if we're going to put serious for two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five, uh. HR uh will be starting meeting to discuss the transfer process for employees. Uh, school transition plan, because this is a, a big endeavor for us to welcome families and for sort of receiving students. And uh be ready for the new students and to welcome them and make the transition seamless. Uh, and also providing opportunities for all their older affected families. Uh, our early round, this closed for open enrollment. Uh, but starting in January, open enrollment is open for all families at all schools, and that will continue throughout this process. That's not, this is actually a ship we made last year. Um, and it's something that will continue this year, uh for those families who are affected. Who wish to uh find a different solution for their, solution for them. So uh we will continue to have open enrollment. So any families affected by this will.
That's a lot.
Three of the four green dates, you know, I think we put save the date, third, twenty-third, the, the ones in green are the ones that you would have to. We have separate. HR meetings for staffing colleagues, questions and such. So these regional community forums are primarily for our community. We've been dividing it to the event. And then at the January twenty-third meeting, this is where we have sent a postcard to every resident. In the district's boundaries. Forty-some thousand dollar expense to send that type of postcard to buy, required by snake statute. And then we would report out this type of similar information as well as the input received. From the community regional forums, um and then comments, um post, post questions. That's your chance to listen to the community there as well. So it's a very long process. And then again. Should we get the sense that we are forward the files, so it would be February eighth? So that's the statute that drives this. We. Discuss other options, if we consider other avenues, uh then it changes the time. These recommendations are for the fall of twenty-four. These recommendations are for the fall of twenty-four. We vary from that, you know, it's likely that we couldn't meet that timeline and such. Send your comments or suggestions today. And this next part of the discussion will influence what we bring to the board on Thursday. Will influence all of the things yet to come. So. Questions and this in the calculator.
I have a question about this timeline, the regional. Yes, and we're not required to go to them.
Correct.
If it was beautiful. Uh, I would go if it was beautiful. I don't know if it would be, what it was gonna take.
Yeah, I mean, it's a pretty structured format. We've done these in the past, opportunity for the community to receive a certain issue and ask those questions. I don't recall if board members have been in the past, they don't think so. Uh, once again, if you want, if it was gonna be a forum, you'd have to post it. And I don't want to mislead people that the board is there to make any actions because they're not. It's just an opportunity to present. So we have a website, we're developing uh over the. That website will be the place that we post this presentation presumably tomorrow uh and such. And then. We will have the FAQ, which uh will collect those questions. We will provide answers. For some we may not be able to find on spot, follow that up. People always have a scan code to go to that website and follow up on it. But yes, we will get to see all of the comments and questions uh throughout the process.
So I have a question. Um, what presentation would you put out to the public tomorrow?
So uh, Dr. Jaris, Mavergan, and I would present this presentation that we've just gone through. This fifteen-minute presentation, what we would record tomorrow morning, um with any changes based on what we think we hear from you this afternoon.
So it'd be a voice?
A voice-over slideshow, basically, of this presentation. Yeah, hope to have it by tomorrow afternoon. We have planned to report tomorrow morning.
So I have a question. Um, the statute, what's the timeline for that? Is it six months before a school could be pulled? What's, it's out of statute that you're? The, the statutory timelines are really around the notification and having ten days between the. Uh, December, technically the December seventh board meeting and the February or the uh January twenty-third community forum. And then another ten days between the front and the February eight meeting. It's really surrounded around, around those timelines, not necessarily. Providing any length of time.
It's not a language.
Capitatory that a notice, etc. But we want the community input.
I think this may be the question, I mean, what's the latest the process can go? Be more impacting. I think that's a running order. It's a really difficult question because uh there are so many impacts. I, you know, changing the timeline. There's the staffing impacts, right? I, I'm shocked with the statute. And I think what we presented is a timeline to make all of this happen, call it one-four. Think the answer, the best answer is, if, if we delay it any longer than what's presented in this timeline, it probably won't happen for the one-four.
Um, when you're talking about the changes on the website, uh Eagle Ridge specifically, we've got the capacity to pull from other districts. In open enrollment. Is that, you still have the same capacity to change to the east side of the district from, from north neighborhood district? You still have the capacity to pull payments as well. Okay, thank you.
Thank you to everyone who was part of this. This amount of work is tremendous and it is so thorough. And I just. Appreciate it so much. So thank you to everyone who was on this committee. Um, my question is. Um, many employees will be affected by this. Like, there, there, there will be a loss of employees. How, what happens to them can make go to others. But there's.
On the foresight. Between foresight. I think we're going to report this to keep them on. Ask me to place them in the position some. The same position that we, 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 we.
Along those same lines. Along those same lines, we're, um, I, I'm still having a hard time with the, with the numbers because we're not limiting anybody off. We're projecting from cost savings, and I do understand that when we close up. Are we including natural inclusion?
So for example, uh, just. Uh, two hundred and fifty teachers. Two hundred that I mentioned, this will impact the school. So we may be a little bit more restrictive uh during our hiring, see usual terms of hiring outside of district. Um, but that I think is a quick work on school free receivable. We, this is why we would.
I think the answer to your question also, there's a net reduction of positions. We're reducing the number of teaching positions and. Closing the four schools, we're reducing the number of support staff positions. And that's where we arrive at the net six hundred thousand. Because eighty-five percent of our budget is salaries and benefits. And so the net is fewer people.
And this process for the employees, are we considering um seniority and positions? Or is, is the district going to be recommending placing people in different? How does that look for the staff, both certified and non-certified?
The answer to that is, uh, we have language that. Our certified employees. Give that our, uh, the language that we have developed is what we're going to wire and to. Uh, to address uh the placement of all.
The follow-up, how will this affect the upcoming bargaining process? With the.
I don't know. It's not going to affect the upcoming bargaining process. Um, there are, there, I am anticipating. There are going to be questions for our teacher transfer process committee, same committee, also a transfer placement process. I think we're just keys. Um, they are going to. Probably have to do some thinking about some specific questions. So along those lines, I can tell you, one of the things that we're doing immediately. Is we are, uh, if not already today, uh, I know later than tomorrow, we directly impact employees. Are going to receive survey, uh, or they can submit more questions uh on this topic. Uh, and those two committees are going to look at those questions in the context of. Uh, of school closure and our existing language regarding cross uh uh transfer. Uh, to see if there's anything we need that we're going to need to, to address.
Will it be an open committee or a committee that is selected by this superintendent that does not follow open meeting line, who doesn't allow?
It's, it's an existing standing uh committee that's already in place. So uh. And we gave the principles already. You have addressed employee questions directly. Uh, based on the work of collecting uh employee questions, analyzing those through the committee process. Moving those back up to schools to, to address our employees directly about the questions that they have.
I have a lot of other questions, so we can wait till we, okay, I, I have a question. Um. I've been in this district, but it went from a, a medium school to a huge school. I was at Whispering Wind for those over nine hundred students there. And so I've seen the authority in, uh, it, this directly affects specials especially. And one of the benefits of making schools bigger is that you can have full programs and at a school. So you have one nurse instead of two nurses. If you're, if you're just taking two schools together, just for simplicity. Then you have one art teacher, so the two, you have everything of that nature. So that does a lot. Um, and I believe we have been lacking in those specials through the years, finding teachers to fill those spaces. Is that correct? In summers, in some areas. Okay. Um.
I think it's worth noting that if the school grows, there's, there's more special area allocation is resolved, classrooms. So some of these very small schools that might only have three special area teachers because of having another hundred kids. They may get to the point where they have three and a half to four special area teachers. So they may be able to offer more. That was some of the programming that. So they may be able to offer more. That was some of the programming that Jerus has kind of mentioned.
Yes.
Right, yeah.
So we'll have decreases, obviously, of course, we'll we'll have to add in some other places. There will be a difference though that is what what adds up to um.
Closures. No matter how you slice them. Are very hard on the community. Been down this road numerous times and it's very hard on the community for different ways. I appreciate this committee for hours and hours and hours and hours spent. I appreciate that they kept being under wraps while they were coming to understanding how things could be best. And I know they took. I, you can't even list all the things they took in uh uh like special ed and and grouping and busing and combining and transportation and major streets. I mean, the list is endless of what you considered. And I just want to thank the committee and to Joe and Steve for their amazing hard work on this. This document is not, does not come easily and I appreciate your hard work. Questions?
Oh, Mrs. Baker? Um, can you talk a little bit more about how the special ed self-contained kids will be affected? Um. How many classes we're losing? Are the classes gonna go up? Will they be on buses longer as a result of this? Like, how are those changes with our self-contained special ed?
I don't have those seven or eight classrooms for the programs, but you know, we have uh, we have three campuses that have connections. Those are programming purposes, emotional, so. As two to three classrooms right now, so that would go from behind out to six. Um, or or something like that. Um, and as far as our uh L A S program, currently our L A S program at Barksburg uh is going to be scheduled to be relocated to Copper King and where the other L A S program. So we'll be consolidating resources there. And right now, that that program we started last year, uh changing it from a K six program to an organ intervention to, so it was being filtered down to a K three program. And so again, right now, I think each program has three or four classrooms. That was already gonna be reduced, but they spring it over and combined with uh what they had as the that kind of goal.
Uh, as far as mentioning that the class on staffing, which is at this point aren't changing, may not, we may have these recommendations for the special. Now conversations around that, but at least the conversation on closure or re-honoring is not recommending changes to the class size staffing. So those special program numbers at this point are staying the same.
And as far as transportation, we've always tried to uh place programming in various places around the district. I mean, obviously, we're we're bound by where we have capacity to place for place programs. Uh, but we're always trying to make sure that we have some programming at different points across the district so that live in this community, you're not traveling to the other side of the district. Uh, uh Lynn Taylor and Brandon uh George have sat down with these recommendations and looked at everything to determine if transportation will be an issue. Uh, currently, they do not feel being uh identifying any transportation issues with these programs. Obviously, again, new students are identified, uh there's always some flexibility that could change what that looks like and that is something that transportation will address at the time, but um, the placement of these programs in itself are the necessary change uh the transportation issue.
Also, we're noting that, you know, it's been very clear about the declining role and they we budgeted for five hundred and fourteen students, but we're running around fifteen. So closing, you know, schools is uh helping us address that that current shortfall. That two and a half million dollars roughly because of few students this year. And to answer your question, especially since if you don't discuss, you know, move forward in the conversations around closures, then there'll be other conversations about where we have to make those adjustments and a bunch of them next year. And those would impact the bargaining conversation.
This is slide thirty-four that talks about the, you know, committee recommendations. Oh, sorry, thank you. Cause I'm sure you all put numbers on your phone line too. I appreciate the time taken by the mini members. I'm just curious. Was academic achievement ever considered in any of these these headlines? Um, I know that desert spring preparatory. Um, they are at forty-seven percent proficiency rate and working highly proficient sixty-one, which is higher average than a lot of our other schools. Um, so I was a little bit surprised to see that one on the list for closure. Also because it is one of our core knowledge schools and I know we did have some special on core knowledge. Um, but parents do, it it is an attractive thing for parents to have a core knowledge school that they can attend. It's, it was also listed on the U S News and World Report as one of the best elementaries in the country. And so that to me is a little bit surprising and perhaps the recommendation was made prior to that report coming out, but I'm just, I'm having a hard time with with just how we got to these four.
Uh, overall letter grade was considered not individual test scores. So when we're looking at letter grades, if there was a recognition of are we posing as school and sending students from any school, who is this school, right? And recognizing that difference. So looking at that particular area, I know the probably probably shouldn't get all the to that area or these schools. Um, and uh, so then there are other factors obviously that came into play and I would say that probably one of the things which has been different um, school setting was the and also the central location of it being able to split uh split it up into different schools. As I pointed out, the hard part is there, there wasn't a single factor that said, this is the factor that we're here had on. It was a ongoing conversation about the impact. Carrying the conversation out uh about all the different factors um and then making a decision overall about which model I felt like I I want to support.
Kristen Bernie, I, um, several months ago, we had, we had a presentation on low enrollment. I don't remember that one on the list originally for rolling enrollment. Well, maybe it was and I just. Yeah, just presenting.
Hey Mark, so that was, at the time, they were, yes, at the time, there, there was a school, I think, that five hundred and three, five, that was one of the ones going forth. Up down, I think two, four, I have to go back to the slide, I think it went four, third, four, forty.
Have we had any discussions that can help? They will affect the high school enrollments. We the, we found the district. Probably the only one that will mostly be affected with that change of the Indian Bend community uh going to shade. That the students would go to Shadow Mountain, but I'll probably go to Shadow.
And actually, it was all according to Shadow Mountain. So, so it doesn't really impact the shadow high school.
Um, going back to the the easters. I don't know if this is a question, this might be just a preservation. It feels about the slide. Um, which, so we don't. Um. Isn't it like a region that's had a lot of boundary shifts over the past several years? Um. You know, when sandpaper became non-home school, we went to the springs that part, or the cap, I think, sometimes it's public. I mean, how do we think the community is going to? I mean, just. Any thoughts on how you think the community may be looking at at this?
Uh, I'm not expecting it to be incredibly well received and right? Uh, and you know, yeah, to your point, some of the schools have uh have, some of the parents and certain staff have been through the process before. And so it is, Dr. Bill mentioned, a very difficult emotional conversation. Uh, one of the, one of the factors, I don't have another party, but there is a high number of open enrollment at the Springs and that was part of our conversations. To recognize and that um impacting the school versus impacting the neighborhood communities living there. Uh, the numbers are a little bit more leaning towards the open enrollment piece of it. Um, it doesn't mean they still don't want to stay in the community in the area, but that, that is something that
And this is obviously, I think, here, I obviously. Parent lives in Deadwood Springs, right? My kids went there. Graduated the district, but uh it's also some of our most expensive housing. Fifty percent of town too, right? So while we have a lot of luxury apartment complexes going up and down staff that boards. Certainly see those not bringing in kids. As the number of people per household continues to dwindle. A lot of these are big family homes, but they're very expensive. I, I, I guess in terms of the opening enrollment numbers, are the Actually, yes, I'm sorry, though, do we know where those, are they open? Other schools in the areas of some reason.
It's a combo of both. And I don't think, oh, they have over two hundred open enrollment. Do you think some of those are trans, right? Yeah. Of that that are within the district and about a different size. In terms of the demographic projections, comment, wait to put on the numbers that they have. The numbers are provided because it seems like he, that he or she was hitting on moving again, and I know that there that shows some challenges with the demographic objections. Um, was that is a consideration or a small consideration because those numbers can be off. It, I mean, it's some, just looking through the numbers, some of them seem we, interesting, yeah, make this so.
We know what our fortieth day numbers are, so that's, you know, easy enough to take a look at and stay on. What he has is that each of our students, whether they're open enrolled or live in the district, he knows where they live. Uh, he caveat to everything, and this was shared with the committee. That it's hard to know what's going to happen with the open enrollment students in particular. But even in a situation like this, if a student's going to their boundary school and that boundary changes, they may make a different choices as well. Um, so we understood that those numbers are a little bit more um squishy than we would, you know, like ideally, but there's really no other way to get from numbers unless we were to poll every parent and we could poll them today and they could change them like tomorrow. Um, so that's why we stuck with a little bit. We didn't talk about this too much, but we stuck with the eighty-five percent of capacity. We intentionally didn't put, make any changes to any of them that would put uh a school over eighty-five percent of their capacity. There's a couple of reasons for that. Uh, the capacity is never where you need it. It just always happens that way. Um, but also so that if there were, you know, changes in some flexibility in those numbers and what parents decided that they would at those campuses for that. So that's um, that's kind of how we address the fact that we know those numbers do change a lot.
I think in part of the answer to the question too is, you know, obviously his projections are projections, right? The ten years. And so I think from the initial stage, that was part of the conversation. Uh, but the conversation, I think, went back too quickly, more the hard reality where we're at. And the conversation, uh, you know, back in in April, when we first presented data to the mini members. It was last year's fortieth day data, which had changed, right? And so the initial conversations were, let's identify some regions, some option. Uh, then we brought that back in in July uh with some more information for them and kind of weeded through that those options and narrowed them down. We took that back to the demographer and said, here are the options. Now give us updated numbers. Uh, which he was able to do based on this year's numbers. And and that actually did kind of filter into the conversation and some of the decision-making too, as we saw how numbers had changed over the past uh year.
I appreciate how much consideration was given that a school not be broken into four pieces. And to keep communities together. I think that's really no. More kids are not going into it. I appreciate that. And I, and in the past times, we have gone out of our way to encourage activities to bring communities together. And many we think so. I'm assuming that's what we do this time also.
Feedback from the whole leaders who reached out to people in each group and said, hey, you've been through it, give us some feedback, do that and make difference. So we know some of the things that were really positive. Uh, in in receiving school rules that we want to continue to do this way. Now should we get there? Sort of solicit that feedback to get the next steps.
Um, oh, go ahead.
So I've not ever gone through school closures or redistricting publicly, but um in the past, I was researching and looking. And in the past, we've given a full calendar year to notify, um, you know, just especially our teachers and the community. And while I understand this committee has been ongoing for the past year, it wasn't in the public, I think it well. And and to me, it feels kind of rushed to try to shove this in before the next school year. And and so I I would really like as a board to take a hard look at, um. You know how painful it is. And so I, I, I appreciate that we're doing, that we're gonna be hosting town halls and new things, but I, I think the what really is is difficult for me is that this what, these were kind of made in silos, if you will. Cause I didn't even know what the recommendations were going to be. Um. To me, it it goes back to, are we a district of that that cares about their staff? Cares about the community? Are we being transparent? Are we truly eliciting community input? Because to me, if this ball, this ball is already rolling, we're gonna get input and then just implement the plan so that we can make them, make it by the next school year. That to me isn't really it's really not um fair to our community members, including and families and.
So I'd like to make a comment on that. Um. Nationally, birth rates have dropped tremendously nationally. I recently, my son sent me a whole bunch of stuff on that. And nationally, birth rates have dropped tremendously. And if we were not to make these cuts, we would be making other cuts, which would be extremely painful. So I guess we get to choose the pain. And um it it's not as if we don't have to make cuts because i- in the past, yes, there has been some time given with students through the accounts to go through and try to get more students and of things of that nature. But uh, or a year to say goodbye or whatever. But I believe our enrollment has dropped. So, I mean, it was kind of declining of this nature and now it went like this. And I think we have to take quick steps because of the nature of the increase rather than how it was handled in the past. They were decreasing enrollment throughout the district as much as they are now. So it's different variables involved. Does that make sense? And and having gone through this before, I don't want to, but I see the benefit of proceeding. Because we have to be closely responsible with the buildings we have, with the teachers we have, with the specials we have. We are so lacking in uh so many areas that we can't hire people for, for. Hopefully this would help give some of those students the help they need. They haven't been able to receive. Mrs. Christians.
I, I do appreciate that, but had we done this several months ago to open it up to community members and maybe this, this should have been a board committee that was open, open meeting law, open to the public. Because having it in a superintendent advisory committee, it wasn't we couldn't have these sessions and we lost a whole year now where we could have done this.
Okay, now, having gone through this so many times, the rumor mill is still bad. And and no one is looking at a full picture. They're not looking at their bus routes. They're not looking at all of the detail. They have spent hours and hours and hours. And if you would have opened it before, there would have been snippets that got out and caused more problems. Mrs. Mr. We can hear.
Yes, thank you. Um, I know you should have talked about being through this before. Well, the teacher in the district, I've been through this before. Order from the other end of it. And um, I've got friends of mine who are from the school that was closed.
And now there are another school that's been closed. And so I know the pain they're going through. So we've, like I said, we've done before and there's a conversation all the time from teachers, parents, et cetera. And you learn from those. We don't do it always the same every time. We do it better. We learn from them. We do a better job than we did before. Okay, some of the, some of the things you said before. We talk about we should have done, but here's where we at. They've done a lot of this with many hard work. We all agree on that. And here we are. We can't undo what we don't even, you don't like. You gotta go from here and go forward and do it in a positive way to help everybody else.
Okay. And I, I believe in that regard. We had hoped to recover more students.
Exactly.
And we couldn't start the process because we were still in hoping to recover more students at the time. Mrs. Brimberg, did you have? Government or?
Um, I would just add, there was definitely some discussion about this very point within the committee. Uh, about even, you know, whether there's a recommendation for moving in the next year or, or the subsequent year. Um, and ultimately the committee felt like, um, while different than in the past. Uh, some of the feedback that we received and they received from their stakeholders was that. Starting a school year, knowing that your school is closing, one, parents and families start to leave already and teachers and staff start to leave already. But for those that are left sort of a feeling of like depression and discouragement that you know that your school is closing. And so it really lead towards, you know, moving, moving across us and, and accepting the fact that this is where we're at. So at this point, knowing, you know, that these are the campuses we're recommending and not doing it for a year and a half from now would maybe. Lead to further discouragement on the part of staff.
Other comments?
All those kind of, what I was.
And you asked about.
That's what you were thinking.
Yes. One point. Crazy, also. Looking at four schools, we asked those schools to move out the children, you know, intimately in terms of. Um, come up with program, do things, those are the same type, right, Sarah? And that was not easy on those schools. It was not easy on those communities. You know, it's. You know, ultimately, we, you know. Sure. Some two, two were being successful in programs and two weren't and closed when we scaled. Last time around. We realized that that was not. Going to be an effective. In a process and we met you weren't this type of. Or did we give? Give every brain arrow to here? No.
I thought it was the same thing there. Campbell Bell and Campbell being rebuilt. So we had a, we have a. County third was, no, Campbell Bell. Giving school for that building project.
Oh, they did have that there.
It was because Campbell Bell was being built that they had to.
I wasn't involved. It's been, you know, that's driving part of the conversation, but that was the reality. Campus under construction, uh, that was part of the selling point was, you know, reminding me when there's going to be a break.
Questions? Dr. Bell, do you have any comments? Have we been some things that we were? Are curious we didn't ask about?
No.
Sure, about the deep and digest this and you have any more questions and. I'm just ready to get through it. Just try to answer all the questions. Today, your present, today's presentation. I think. I sense you understand the emotional fall that this conversation has on students, staff and. And so. Think our community can see that, feel that. I feel nice that you're considering it. Since that we will. Foster this conversation moving forward. Our community is the one here from you today. So I think I heard what I mean, unless you have some final thoughts and recommendations and questions or comments that haven't been asked.
I just want to comment that. Um. From the. Um. The, the demographers, sorry, trying to come up to right. Demographers conversation before. They thought there was going to be an uptick in oh eight, oh nine in birth rate. And it didn't happen and it has not happened. And just for. Whatever, my church boundaries. Are similar to the district boundaries and we keep condensing number. Of units within, and because we have assigned boundaries and we keep condensing them. And so I've gone through this with church. Plus kids under used to. And I've lived here a long time and I've seen very large schools being reduced and there's less children. So. That's, it, there's. That's really what I come down to. There's less children. And also, if you look at how close our schools were built, this hasn't really been brought up. But when this was a brand new area. New homes go in, new school built in and they're what, were they every square mile?
Yeah, in the seventies and eighties, square mile. It's considered even two and a half square. It's kind of the model that we're using right now. Uh, it's just the factors of the horrible housing, birth rates, uh, choice. It's just, it's a different model. So it. Some district superintendents across the, you know, country, they have said, you know, they're kind of right sizing. They're getting the right number of buildings to fit the population that they're serving. Whereas it is, it is about maximizing.
Any other comments? Did you have any?
I continue, but I'm going to wait for the room.
For the fight.
The law.
They just said. Nigel, okay, so we'll take a break right now and then come back and finish. About straight, but that's you. Yes, you guys, okay, then I'm good. Speaker. I'm. I'm basically quite sorry and why it's up. It's a lot of. They, they just. We do, we do. I never called. Okay, so we're going to, thank you, Dr. Bell.
Thank you. Um, so the next part of our organization is. Provided that we, um, have the board take action on, you know, every week. It's in the, in the, to maybe maximize some of our facilities and space. This is a list. It's been developed over the last. Four schools, so it's kind of an ongoing. And the ranking is really, it just gives us an idea. Things that we talked about is kind of grouping these into, into chunks of three, three. The top third, middle third, bottom third type of thing. There's a lot of factors in here and, and we are not prepared. To assign a repurposing option to a building because we haven't closed it yet. And while some of these options might be a better match for one facility, it may not be for another. So that's why we really need to go through the process, make decisions about the closure and the reboundry. Um, but we wanted you to give, have an idea of some of the, the top considerations. For the rankings. We are working with a real estate company that, uh, will help us with, um, market rates. Appropriate facility rentals, as well as leases. So we think, you know, renting facilities out, creating revenue generating ideas is, is the first, uh, kind of. Priority. Can we use this facility? Other people interested in renting those facilities, uh, both as a whole facility and a partial facility. And we have a couple of, um. Potential clients that, that have expressed interest that we're talking to or continue to do so since. Any sites developed and they may have an interest in one site more than another, but that's at the top of the list. Uh, based on previous conversations with the governing board, um, we know that there's a. Interest in potentially creating specialty school. Celebrated school or a traditional school. This is an idea that has, uh, been discussed in a variety of circles to maybe bring kids back to the district that have looked for that type of environment. And so if the right facility is, develops. Uh, through the closure process that, that becomes a good match for this type of environment. Its location, its facility, that we think that this would be something to consider. This is probably a planning year. Um, twenty-four, twenty-five with a fall of one five potentially. Something that we could implement immediately. Yeah, conversations around CTV space, both with, with West Mac. Some, maybe the college district. Potentially increasing partnerships with creating some weird technical education spaces. And play fields, we know through rentals that there's always a greater deep. Need and demand for play fields. There's from lacrosse to soccer. There's just not enough field. So. This is an area that we might be able to expand some agreements with the city. Um, so we're willing to, uh, consider that conversation, accelerate that. Uh, potentially a relocation of JPL preschool. This is one of our buildings that's very old and. Has not been remodeled. It's a, it's a site that needs a lot of upkeep, so it may be a site that we need to relocate from. Maybe retire it sometime with that. District space. Storage, we'll kind of get into this, the, the last things that are just kind of on the satellite transportation location when we look at. You know, maybe parking some buses at one end of the district, uh, so we can cut down on miles and, and routes. That might be something to consider. Affordable staff housing has been a previous conversation. This would take legislative action to even be. Considered, so that's not likely to go any farther. We have. Previously talked about not wanting to be landlords ourself, but there's some implications about being. Landlord in terms of the employee and rental relationship. So. That's not likely to develop, creating partnerships with community agencies. People that have provided ideas. But that's all we are at this time is ideas. Selling property is certainly an option. This is an option that we require that the voters vote. Uh, to sell property. There's a cost to doing that. Putting any item on the ballot is about a four hundred thousand dollar expense. But other districts, including Glendale Elementary, has recently done that. So it's an option that is on. So at this time, you know, we certainly. Great questions, taking any ideas. Uh, once again, it's not a checklist that says this is first. Then, first, second, third. It's just a list that's kind of been prioritized by cabinet for consideration, often your discussions and.
Okay, I, I have a question. Where did this ranking come from?
Cabinet. This was cabinet's idea based on things that you're aware of.
Okay, so the ranking is cabinet.
Yeah, these are just cabinet's ideas because we know, for example, complete facilities rental, we have, we have clients that have expressed an interest. So. Those are items that.
It's, it's a beginning, a beginning.
Very beginning.
Okay, and other comments?
Play fields, would we be renting that space? Would we be demolishing buildings at Dr. Bell?
It's a possibility.
You know, but I'm, I'm just trying to understand in my head what.
So like, for example, reach eleven is, uh, a city of Phoenix, uh, parcel and they rent that out. Many hours during the day, uh, and such, and they're always craving for more fields. So. It's possible that we could create, uh, situations where we had fields in the center town.
We would keep the building, we would have a whole building.
It depends. I mean, we have a couple of properties that, that are probably close to being retired and we have policy about retiring properties. Um, but that would be conversations depending on what's been closed, what's available.
Well, these are all pretty interesting. I don't want to get into heavy discussions about them, totally, really. Over the school we're talking about. We can kick around all we want, but we know. So I'll, I'll save my comments on this kind of thing until we actually are doing this.
That's.
I mean, I appreciate that, you know, the, the first few items on the list, I wanted to say. Generate revenue or, or bring students to have to generate revenue. So. Uh, you know, I appreciate that.
you know, I appreciate that, that we got this list and that it's quite important for us and like and I, you know, we're thinking of new options. As we've gone through this process over the years, since we've talked about what we did and we do with the space and there's, there's older ideas that want to bring professional burnage and, and, but, but hey, and but well, but I do think that this is
yeah, I think the idea that you just mentioned there is kind of be thinking of the decision.
Oh, go ahead.
I, I also like the renting, revenue generating, as long as we price the, the rentals at a price where we will generate revenue and not lose lose money. I, can you explain to me, I know that, um, so number ten, I sell property. The district has the takes to sell property. I know we have multi-million properties that, that are very desirable. And, and I'm trying to understand, I know that there's there's some, I don't know if we have in state land or it's all the property that we own outright. Can you explain to me what what that would look like and what the hesitation was under this?
Well, yeah, I can answer it in a lot of ways. I mean, first of all, I don't think that any of us have the foresight to know what the property needs of the district are going to be going to turn. This, you know, community grows up, maybe more like the Los Angeles community, there might be a need for that property. Any sale of property is also one-time sale. Not an ongoing, which revenue generating ideas would be on. And depending on the property, the age of the property and such, there's some factors that require the sale of the property to go back to pay off bond debt, things like that. So there's, depending on the property, there's some factors there. Is there anything you want to add to that?
Yeah, statute requires that at least when it was thirty-seven or thirty-nine percent goes back to pay off bond, so we don't, the district doesn't actually get to keep all of the proceeds of the sale, and even with all the proceeds of the sale, again, that's, you know, sort of a one-time, I mean, also when a school district sells a piece of property, you have no guarantee that the person who purchases the property does complete the situation of the district's decline works, and so that's a big gap with it.
Yes.
Sounds a little bit weird where there's other items on the ballot, but it's totally not. The district has to cover the full cost and that's about four hundred thousand.
Four hundred thousand.
Four hundred thousand, that could be one item or it could be three items?
It, when you have more items, it costs more money.
Oh, so four hundred for one item?
Four hundred for one item. It doesn't necessarily double for two items, but if you have.
Five hundred.
And depending what's on the ballot, some of those don't like here.
Correct. This last time we had some shared costs on the ballot because the city of Phoenix shares most of our jurisdiction, and so we were able to share the two dollar for twelve cent cost for each rotor with the city.
Other question?
I would just say, um, that this is, it's a great list, but it's not. It can be added to it. The fact that it, it shows that cabinet is looking a lot. Many different options and still appear to be open to your other.
Thank you. You certainly, you know, share those with us. Even an hour later, whatever comes to mind. Considerable options, and this is Christians' point. Right market value for our rentals.
One of your comments, um, Dr. Bell, about maybe thinking outside the box with that you have special things to offer, something, you know, that Chandler Unified, they have a, a charter-like high school that is, I think it's, there's a preparatory high school or something, but it is Chandler Unified School District School and properties where we magnet school or, or when I say charter-like, it would be some of the things you suggested, like elementary and so on, I'd be like, I'd be like that. Just a comment, not a question.
Thank you.
Do you have other comments? Yes, I'm going off what Miss Christians just said. Is there a a desire from the community and the district for like a traditional glory school or removing that with desert boring after party?
I, I think that this board, as well as members of the community from a variety of lenses, have suggested that a traditional type school setting, an accelerated big school setting is something the district should consider. And that's why it's on the list. What's it brings preparatory? And then we have a lot of other schools that was kind of an attempt to create a traditional type school life experience. Sure, uniform, outside uniform, that thing, happy uniforms at Halloween as well. Right, so, uh, I think that was the intent, but you know, I don't know that it ever reached that level of recognition as a traditional charter school in the community when it comes to people looking for that experience.
Um, let me make a comment on this. I have heard, I'm pretty well known. I wanted a traditional school, I just didn't recall any of yours, so this is nothing new. I think, uh, I've said this dozens of times from, as a school board member. Um, at one point, um, they have a waiting list to get into a traditional school and, and so, so I'm all, I'm all game. Yes, any other comments?
We have seen that have visited several traditional schools around the valley, including Cheyenne.
Yeah. And I, and I've been told there's two hundred of our students in traditional school, this outside our bounds with the community respect. Yes.
Yep. So I have a question on how we know primary and secondary. So are due titles, when schools not, we have different rules? I'm not sure. For closures, are, do they not go by different rules? Why? Why we're not considering that one until what we're talking about? Because it's, it's on one property and it's pre-K, it's third grade, full principal, staff, there's a band, like six, three days, or the girls club in the middle. To me, that seems like an excess of this spend, it's owned in property and it used to be one pre-K through six.
It's not our only property that's still due to four says campus, I don't know. Here to be additional administrative costs, right? Two principals and secretaries. Um, you know, blending those together as a merger may save some, but when you look at the staff and we actually gain some benefits in those situations. Those campuses combined would be very large. Very large.
It'd be over eight hundred.
The pounds would be over a thousand. So this creates a very manageable environment, it creates a sense of communities, we have the primary there versus intermediate, and when we have all the primary kids on a campus, you know, together, it does save us some staffing. It's kind of like murder. We, we got a tenants area, it's true.
Right. All the educator, the staff are there to save our, but I think I simplified it too much.
Well, you know, with a school of a thousand, I don't think we would have one principal. System of assistant principals for that and you can't.
Okay.
But it's paraplegic and yeah, yeah, right?
Any other comment? Have we missed something from cabinet? Oh, yes, excuse me.
Ask some questions already, so sharing what I have prepared and just this little piece that has been touched on that I think was worth articulating. Mr. Pantera had talked about how we've done this before and have been discussing or Dr. Bales earlier, so we reached out to So building on that, um, did reach back out to our employees, the association presidents. Uh, and the common thread and, um, and the feedback that I received was very strong about communication. So what we want you to know is a lot of our efforts starting today is about clearly communicating or articulating to our teachers what the process is that follow to get them information that we, so that's what I've attempted to describe.
Did I do something?
No.
Yeah, I think, yeah, this, everything else was covered in answers to Vasper there.
So the last slide we have, um, mentioned at the beginning were some considerations that we asked each of our associations for um, in making transitions potentially smoother for our students that, um, in our community. So obviously having those open houses for incoming families, we think that they feel welcome. Um, instead of the buddy system for new students so that they also feel welcome. Part of communication isn't just talking, it's also listening to what people are saying. And when you listen to those concerns, we may grasp something that we haven't considered previously. That their communication just comes up, uh, retreats for the receiving schools to allow the new staff to start to bond together. Support for moving staff, things like compensating their time for moving their classroom, um, having somebody help, uh, just move their physical things and having the supplies that they need. Um, ensuring sufficient technology and curriculum, so you may be used to something at one school, is that going to be the same at the next school and can you have access to all of those things? Um, the tours for any receiving staff or families, not just an open house, maybe they can't make it to an open house, but touring the school, being their potential peer, things of that nature, and then even simple things as here, here for the moving staff so that they feel like part of that unique school. That's it.
Comment, questions?
I do appreciate all the work that everybody put in for this. I think part of my frustration though is it just going back to, and it was similar to to the bond committees because I, as a board member, this responsibility is, is the board's responsibility. I would have liked to have listened, participated, understood the reasons rather than just giving a list and here you go, please approve. Um, and, and I think it would start in the future, maybe these types of committees, board committees rather than to bring in committees, then more people participate. Question on how, how was this committee selected?
So we have the leaders of each of the various, uh, groups, you know, the certified group and the class by group and the parents and so forth, and they reach out to their community members to see, or to their members to see who's interested in participating in the community and select.
Did request, uh, for representation across the district. One, everybody having a problem with the community, making a decision that would affect others. So we did our best to make sure that every teacher system had representation as well as middle level, uh, middle, uh, high school middle and elevator.
Timing.
Title, I go title on those lines. It just seems that on these, a lot of these committees, you see the similar names popping up a lot and it would be nice to start hitting new community members involved in some of these committees as well, and I think if we start having more board committees, then we can reach out to a different different type of people. Because I know that there's some teachers, certified and non-certified individuals that would have liked to have participated, but they weren't given the option. I don't know, I just, to me, if we want to be transparent and truly appreciate our teachers and our parents, we would want more input rather than rather than, um, do we?
Volunteer to be on these. Every teacher in the district, the teachers, okay, but hey, we need so and so people to be on these committees, but everyone's got a chance to put in for it. Matter of fact, we have so many people put in for it, you gotta make some choice, sometimes we don't know what people's in for. Okay, well, that's why sometimes you see the same people, because they're the same people that put in for these committees because no one else is doing it. But they do have an option and they, and they have a way to try and become members of the committee. And of course you understand that not everyone can be on a committee, can't have a committee with fifty people on. So I, I think we are reaching out. We're, we're trying to get all these people involved that we can.
I would add to that, um, for the case that that now we have the opportunity for that transparency. But we talked about having the confidentiality of the committee to allow them to process through all of their thoughts without the external pressures and then providing recommendations through the board. Now the transparency part of the process, we have lots of opportunities for community feedback, our December seventh board meeting. We have our regional forums to hear from families and anybody can, you know, email Dr. Bales or myself or Missouri. Yeah, any, anybody at any time, the governing board. And those are further opportunities because it's absolutely do want it for our, for our. Go ahead.
The power for what you said, these committee members don't make decisions on their own, they're going back to the people that they represent. And they're finding out, getting more information, they're not backing by themselves.
I thought they learned that maybe that.
In this instance, well, see not only in bargaining.
Generally all. And they might do their research, but I think we want to do. I'm just saying, generally speaking, they're, they're not just, um,
I'd like to make a comment. In looking at this entire report that we, we received it a week ago first time. I, I cannot thank this committee for being so thorough for going through, for thinking of so many areas that I hadn't even thought of. And I just appreciate their time and their willingness to think of the res, it, it's a fiscal responsibility. It's not left, it's not right for politics. This is a fiscal opportunity our district is engaging in. It's a, it's a fiscal change. And I appreciate all the areas they came up with, trying to see how can we blend students? Look at the, the aging of a, a campus. How do we take? Is this campus old? Do we close this campus? Do we move this campus? Does this campus have smaller classrooms for special ed? I mean, there were so many things that you mentioned and all of those things, am I right? Was this discussed in your meetings? All over and over again and, and different, and you probably, they probably came to some conclusion that had to turn around the corner and come back to other conclusions. And had they been, the public involved with it as it went along, they couldn't have had the opportunity to be thoughtful and think about all the areas. So I appreciate that. And I'm one who wants to have committees open, but I understand the process of this and why. Because I've gone through this process so many times, the rumor mill is amazing. And we didn't need the rumor mill of affecting the facts presented, in my opinion.
Present, he's just inside now. So can I ask a few questions then? Please to know that representatives and members of the association represent.
I, I appreciate, I, all of these people committed themselves to many, many hours and I can't think of enough. So, any other comments, questions on this? Do we need to take a break now before we go on to the next? Are we good? Go on to the next? Yes.
And, and I do, I, I don't want to say that I don't appreciate it. clarify that I do appreciate it.
Clarify that I do appreciate all the work that the committee did, but just for you to make decisions, I, you know. I I never, I didn't get a choice to source this to a committee to make these recommendations and then. Input that, I think that's part of the frustration, because in there are the revised statutes, it's the responsibility of a board to. At school closures and the district team, and while, yes, we completely do need input, and we do need committees. Um it should have been a committee coming from the board rather than. Of a committee coming from a ministry.
In saying that, I would like to understand what the expectation is to this of all committee. In terms of our role in a committee like that.
If it was a board committee, they would have had to abide by open meeting law, and the meetings would, they would have had to post. Minutes, and I did look at the minutes, but the minutes were basically the same as the agenda, so they really weren't. Uh a board committee doesn't have to abide by open meeting law and allow members of the. Community to participate in those types.
Okay, which is what we have, it's open meeting, hosted, et cetera, et cetera, but. My question is, is that, and it's what you just responded, what the community would do? What is your expectation? Is it merely because you wanted it open, or is it because you wanted us as the board to participate?
It would be a little bit of both. I would have liked to have more community participation upfront, but I. I'm, the presentation is great and very thorough, but I'm still not understanding why we selected a school that is on the U S. World needs report as one of our best schools and one of our premier elementary schools. And so, um I guess I understand that, you know, we went through this and. To me, I I would have liked to have given an input and. And say in the process, and something that I'm gonna have to vote of the board.
So, this, this is what this is for. I mean, this is for you. Gives me a point, and obviously, don't seem to be happy about that particular recommendation, and obviously. You have the ability to, you know, with your vote, express that, but. I believe, I mean, I feel like I, you know, I think the question was asked by Desert Springs and the answers, but. Actually, you know, this. Closure was for a long time. In the, when we were before, um it was. Same type of desert springs that remain in both towns, and. It was just uh that were close. Um, the the idea of turning into desert springs practice, because that's where it came from, but we're still looking at a school. Site of that, uh in the home store from the Santa community, um. Three, four. Three, five, and we're still looking at numbers that are. And and the numbers are.
Great school is not the building, it's the staff that's there, and we still have the staff. Still the people still know how it's there. And that's not gonna go away.
Hopefully, it's always we.
Any other comments? Thank you. Um, should we take a break now? Should we take a break now before we go on? Take a break? Okay, we'll have a five-minute break.